Okay, thank you all for being here. This is Francesco Squintani from the University of Warwick. Welcome to this special session, which is about a new research centre on quantitative and analytical political economy at the University of Warwick. This brand-new centre is the continuation of the work that the political economy group at the University of Warwick has been undertaking in the last few years, which includes weekly seminars joined with the LSC, an annual conference joined with Princeton University, QuAPs, Quantitative Analytical Political Sciences Group, and the University of Utah, and an away day, which is of internal nature, and of course, a very broad interaction with our network at the university and intervention. Now, the new research centre's purpose is to be a continuation of our experience, but also to broaden our approach, also to people in our network that were not directly involved before, both within the university, for example, in the political science group, and elsewhere. Also, we feel that having this formal vehicle for our research activities is useful for our external visibility. Now, the speakers in these sessions have not been chosen randomly. One of them represents an aspect of the political economy at Warwick. Say, for example, starting in alphabetical order, Peter Buessert, who is now at the University of Harvard, the Harvard University, started as an assistant professor at Warwick, and very, very happy to have been his first job. Following, Chris Ramsay is the head of the QuAPs group at Princeton, which is one of our main partners, in fact, our main partner in the United States. The other most important partner is the Political Science and Political Economy Group at the London School of Economics. Carlo Schwartz was a student at the University of Warwick in the political economy group. And Andreas Stegman is in the political economy group at Warwick at the moment. He is one of our youngest assistant professors, bringing energy and new ideas to our group. Okay, very well. I promised that I was going to stay within five minutes, so without any further ado, let's start in alphabetical orders, I suppose, with Peter Buessert. The floor is yours.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Let me share my screen, which I hope is visible to everyone. Good. Okay, so thank you very much indeed, Francesco, and Michaela, and Warwick, for allowing me to have the opportunity to present. This is a new project with Carlo Prato, a longstanding co-author of mine from Columbia, and it's on the topic of ranked choice voting. Now, ranked choice voting is probably the most salient and rapidly expanding electoral reform in the United States. So this is just a chart that gives you a sense of where it is currently used. One of these little dots is New York City, which adopted ranked choice voting in its democratic mayoral primary and council elections. And a UK-based audience may recall the Liberal Democrats, a condition of joining the Conservative Coalition, was a referendum on the alternative vote, which is an equivalent class of electoral rules, so it's the same as the one that I'm studying here. And in the UK, as in Massachusetts, in 2020, the referendum to introduce that failed. So there's a lot of interest in ranked choice voting. Many of the places on this map that have adopted it did so within the last five years. Now, how does it work? Very briefly, it's a preferential voting system, so unlike a plurality rule, a voter can express multiple preferences for candidates on the ballot, but ultimately, only one can be elected. So voters can rank multiple candidates. If any candidate wins a majority of first preferences, she's automatically elected, and that's the end of it. Otherwise, the candidate with the fewest first preferences is eliminated, and her second preferences are then transferred to the corresponding candidates. And this process continues until one candidate wins a majority of preferences. Another UK example would be the Labour leadership contest, and in the very final round of a long path of elimination, you may remember that Ed Miliband defeated his brother David to become the leader of the Labour Party, so another prominent use of that rule. And it was interesting, because we moved to Massachusetts in 2020, just as the referendum to use it statewide was proposed. And a lot of colleagues in various parts of Cambridge academia were on Twitter asking, "I don't know anything about this rule. What should I vote in the referendum?" And that stimulated our interest in writing a paper about it. And so, what are our goals? Let me just see, there's a bit of a lag in the click here. Good. Our goals are as follows: So we want to assess one of the prominent contentions about the benefits of RCV that is widely touted amongst US- and UK-based electoral reform advocates, like in the UK, the Electoral Reform Society, Fair Vote in the US, who are pretty enthusiastic about ranked choice voting. And the biggest claim that they advocate is that it will encourage policy moderation in the pursuit of second preference votes. And the intuition is very powerful. Under a plurality rule, a candidate only benefits from the support of voters that like her the most. And the argument says this encourages candidates to focus on mobilising the narrow segments of voters who are likely to fulfil that criteria, such as an ideological or ethnic base. Under ranked choice voting, a candidate can benefit from the support of even voters that don't like her the most. And this, it is argued, encourages candidates to pursue a broader policy appeal to try and win these second preferences in the pursuit of election. So this is the main intuition our model is built to address, and to which we try and provide answers along the way, because we are in fact partnering with one of the interest groups that is advocating this reform, and so we want to try and speak to some of their questions. We ask some ancillary questions about RCV's impact on participation and engagement, which in our framework is going to be turnout. It's widely argued that RCV will increase turnout partly because of candidates' incentives to broaden their appeal and bring new voters into their coalitions. And moreover, it's argued that RCV will tend to elect candidates with the support of a majority of votes cast, that it's almost a mechanical consequence. Now, of course, a little reflection on how electoral systems work should convince you that this may not be true in any given circumstance. Our goal is to see if we can say something about when that might not be true, because that casts some doubt on the legitimacy of the winner, at least in the minds of opponents of RCV. So, a very brief overview of our formal framework. We're going to consider an election between three candidates, A, B, and C, but really, it's a game between two candidates, A and B. So they'll be the strategically active candidates who are purely office-seeking. The purpose of C is to ensure that the sum of A and B's probabilities of winning is not always one, and may be responsive to the policies that they pick. Okay, so C is a source of external threat. We'll look at a divided majority context, so it's a pretty canonical framework for thinking about multi-candidate elections. So there'll be a majority, mass one, of voters, who will be dividing between A and B in a manner I'll describe very shortly, and a minority mass gamma of voters who favour C and who only support C. So our majority is going to be split over three policy positions, which are going to be minus one, zero, and one. And the share of the majority is, as given on the slide, without loss of generality, we'll assume that the mass of voters located at one is weakly less than the corresponding mass at minus one. What are preferences in this model? Well, the majority voters' preferred policy is given by the location on this line at each of these three policies. And we'll assume that voters derive linear policy losses in the distance of a candidate's policy from her ideal point. But we'll also want to capture the idea that some of these voters are more intrinsically inclined to like one of the candidates over the other. So what this says is that if you're a voter with an ideal policy of minus one, regardless of the platforms, you're going to get an incremental payoff of theta whenever A is elected, and you'll suffer a loss of minus theta whenever B is elected. Okay? But if you're a voter located at plus one, you get a payoff of theta if B is elected, and suffer a loss of theta if A is elected. And then, so in this sense, you can think of voters at minus one as being in A's base, and voters at plus one as being members of B's base. And we assume that theta is large enough that first preferences can always be taken for granted by each of the corresponding candidates. We'll assume that the moderates' preference for A versus B is uncertain, so there's going to be aggregate uncertainty in the form of a preference shock, tau zero. This is going to be the source of aggregate uncertainty in the resolution of pair-wise contests between A and B, but also between A and C, or possibly B and C as well. So we have one source of continuous aggregate uncertainty. We have to say something about turnout, which is complicated in this framework, because voters may turn up under, for example, a ranked choice voting election, and choose only to rank one candidate. In some systems, you're compelled to fully utilise the ballot; in many others, you're not. And so, the way that we do it is we eschew strategic voting considerations and take a pretty straightforward abstention due to alienation heuristic. So we posit that each voter has an idiosyncratic reservation utility row. So if you're used to a textbook sort of Pesson-Tabelini presentation of a probabilistic voting model, this would be instead an idiosyncratic partisan preference. But here, that source of idiosyncratic variation is a measure of your enthusiasm for turning out to vote and participating. And we assume that a voter turns out under both plurality and RCV, if and only if the payoff from the candidate she likes the most exceeds that idiosyncratic reservation value. So if this were purely a model of plurality rule, you could call row the physical cost of voting, and you would be done. But under RCV, you may choose to show up, but you might not want to fully utilise the ballot. And we capture that simply by assuming that, under ranked choice voting, even if you show up, you only rank the second candidate if your payoff from that least preferred candidate also exceeds row. So under ranked choice voting, this will generate three classes of voters: abstainers, full participants, in the sense that they turn up and rank every candidate, and voters who show up but only rank their most preferred candidate. This is a phenomenon called ballot exhaustion, which is sort of a big part of the debate about the efficacy of ranked choice voting. So the timing: candidates will announce their platforms, not having observed the realisation of this net preference shock. Voters make turnout decisions and voting choices, and the winning candidate implements her announced platform. We're going to assume that C's base is large, in a sense I'm not going to elaborate precisely, but what it will mean is that, under a plurality rule, she's the lead candidate, and that beating her is going to be the binding constraint for either of A or B. So we're implicitly assuming that C has chosen to position herself at her own core supporters' preferred policy. Subsequent work is going to do some poking around to make sure that the framework can accommodate a strategic choice by C. So the key idea of the framework is very simple, or the intuition. Under a plurality rule, by assumption, A or B wins only if her first preferences outweigh C's. Now, A and B's first preferences are going to depend on the behaviour of the moderates, who have an aggregate realisation of this pro-A swing, which, if large enough, will lead moderates to favour A, and if small enough, will lead them to favour B. So if you're an extreme voter, in the sense that you're a member of A or B's base, the only margin for you is turnout, which candidates can stimulate by positioning their platforms closer or further away. Amongst moderates, there's a persuasion margin, because you can affect the location of the threshold realisation of tau, at which moderates revert for A or B. So the key is that, under plurality rule, a candidate, by assumption, has to win the support of moderates, and in sufficient abundance, in order to defeat C. But from A's perspective, B is a very uninteresting candidate; she's just not part of A's problem. Under ranked choice voting, either A or B can win if her first preferences exceed her majority opponent, so if A is able to get enough first preferences to defeat B, at which point she receives a bunch of second preferences from B that are then valuable for her in the pair-wise contest with C. And what this means is that winning moderates' first preferences may no longer be so important, because A might be able to defeat B by pandering to her base, stimulating turnout amongst the core. And even if she fails to win moderates' first preferences, she may be assured of picking up a sufficient number in the event of beating B, that she wins the election. And so the nature of the competition shifts from this pair-wise emphasis on the part of A and B against plurality but minority candidate C. It shifts the competition between A and B in ways that can lead to all sorts of problems, and that's really the key idea. So we have a generically unique equilibrium for all of our primitives, and it will take one of three possible forms. If A's base is small enough, which will also mean that B's base is small enough under our restrictions, the candidates will focus on winning over moderates. If B's base, and thus A's base, is very large in a particular sense, then they play extreme. And there's an intermediate case in which the wedge in A's share of core supporters is large, in which case A panders to her core supporters, B focuses on this persuasion and turnout margin. So this is purely a benchmark. Under RCV, we derive corresponding thresholds, under which equilibrium is sort of similar, which is convenient for comparison, but not exactly the same. So if A's base is small enough, in a different sense, they will locate at the centre. If B's base is very large, then in fact equilibrium compels mixing, where each candidate randomises between appealing to her core supporters and appealing to centrists. And finally, when we have a wedge that favours A in the sense that she has a larger share of core supporters than B, we obtain an asymmetric equilibrium, which A focuses on her base and B focuses on her core supporters. So all the money in this is going to be comparing the thresholds under each system to get a sense of when polarisation might be greater under one than the other. And in one slide, here is what we have to say. Is it the case that RCV necessarily encourages policy moderation? Actually, it depends. In circumstances where you have a large imbalance in each of A and B's relative share of core supporters, under conditions of low voter enthusiasm, so where the mean of that reservation utility is high, and where we have strong partisan attachments that put one candidate's core supporters out of the other's reach, even under RCV, where second preferences are at for grabs, we show that actually you may have more of a tendency to focus on the base under RCV even than a plurality rule. But the weaker candidate, B, whose base is smaller, is in fact always more moderate in a very strong sense. Her strategy is always more moderate in the sense of first-order stochastic dominance. So for any set of primitives, we can do an ordering that is very strong. So stronger candidates may behave worse; weaker candidates always behave better. Does RCV stimulate turnout relative to plurality? It depends. Part of this is going to come down to the choice of voting heuristic, and that's sort of a choice that we made. So we don't emphasise this result too much, but a moment's reflection will convince you that turnout is first preferences. And since first preferences are the sole objective of candidates under plurality, it's no longer obvious that, under RCV, where you're interested in galvanising second preferences amongst people who have already chosen to turn out, why should you expect RCV to do better, and there are circumstances in which it won't? And then, under what circumstances can a winner, under RCV, expect to receive the support of a majority of votes cast? In particular, not if C's base is large, and if this notion of effective polarisation, theta, is large. And the reason that this is sort of interesting and important to the group that we're working with is that these are all the conditions under which proponents of RCV typically try to make their strongest case, in which they see the greatest disadvantage of the plurality rule. So these are the results that we have, and I'm happy to talk about extensions and future work in the Q&amp;A, but I'm conscious that my time is up. So thank you very much again to the presenters and organisers.
Much, Peter. Peter, very well timed. Okay, so, and also excellent project, by the way. And, okay, so let's have Chris now talking. Please, Chris, the floor is yours. While we are at this, I just had an idea. Because, okay, because I don't see questions in the Q&amp;A, and Peter suggested that he talks about extensions and conclusions. Why don't we do that? Sorry for the confusion.
Oh, you want me to stop? Okay.
So I'll, let me give the floor back to Peter. If you wish, you have a few more minutes to talk.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, the extensions that we're working on are giving C a strategic role that justifies why she might choose to locate at her base, because it's sort of a, it's kind of a howler that C does not play a strategic role in the election. The other is to think about other turnout heuristics. But RCV is tricky, because it's only an interesting model if you have three candidates, but if you have three candidates, the usual justifications for sincere voting are kind of out the window. And so, you know, that's something we have to think about. Actually, Andy Eggers and a former Warwick undergraduate, Tobias Nowacki, who's at Stanford, so let me make another reference, have a fantastic working paper that talks about incentives to vote strategically under RCV. So, yeah, in fact, he was an undergraduate when I was a junior faculty at Warwick. So he and Andy have done a wonderful job of explaining why you may have incentives to vote strategically under RCV, and the explosion of the set of pivotal events, which is why we chose to politely put it on one side and simply cite their excellent work. So that's one thing. And then the other is policy motivation, to introduce policy-motivated candidates, because RCV brings a tremendous benefit to the majority in helping them seek election. And you might imagine that in a sort of Calvert-Wittman sense, some of that rent is going to be transferred into policy platforms, which probably will only intensify incentives to go extreme. But we prefer to do our first pass at this using a model with pure election motives to isolate the forces.
It's excellent. And then, of course, I mean, RCV is, I mean, it's also a firm instance runoff, and we have runoff elections in France in 10 days, so that's...
That's right. In my interview, in my interview at Warwick, actually, with Abiné and Francesco after my job talk, this, we talked about the alternative vote, because we were fresh after the failure of the Liberal Democrats' attempt to have it instituted. So it took us a while to come up with an answer to the questions Francesco was asking in the interview, but hopefully we're making some progress now.
One question that came to my mind while listening to the presentation: Would your results change in any way if the reservation utility of the voters is different across the basis of the individual candidate? So if some group in society has a far lower or far higher reservation utility for showing up, and that, then the incentives of the candidate change regarding their positioning?
That's exactly right. So one of the questions, the worries that people have about ranked choice voting is that there will be a wedge in the propensity to use second votes, because some groups may not be familiar with the candidates, or may not be familiar with the system, and it's very complicated. And so you could imagine that one of the candidate's bases just has a lower tendency to participate. And generally, anything in this framework that reduces a candidate's access to second preferences, conditional on beating their opponent, is going to reduce the slack that they get in their contest against C, and make them behave more like they would under a plurality rule. That's sort of the main thing. The other thing is, if you have a cost of voting that is only paid in the event you show up, so imagine there's a fixed cost of voting in addition to these reservation utilities. One other extension that we're working on is one in which that leads to sort of free riding by the candidates, where if I know that, you know, Carlo is going to bring his voters out anyway, amongst those who are willing to turn out, they must have a sufficiently high reservation utility to overcome the cost of voting. And it actually leads to a free-riding mechanic that is not present in our benchmark model, but which further intensifies, you know, some of the naughty behaviour that these candidates are doing in our framework.
Excellent. Okay, now we are again spot on on time. So now I can leave the floor to Chris, and again, I mean, 15 minutes, plus five minutes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for inviting me. Let's see if I can get this shared correctly.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you sit there? All right. The paper I'm presenting today is on the effect of military coalitions on crisis bargaining. It's co-authored work by Brendan Kinkel at Vanderbilt University. It's kind of very squarely in the QAPs sort of research programme, where it's going to be thinking about theory and data, and kind of quantifying theoretical model. Our fundamental question, the thing that we're thinking about, is, you know, how does the presence and composition of warfighting coalitions affect the outcomes of crises and war? And as we sort of, as this has become even more relevant in the last six weeks or so, you know, it's still the case that international disputes over territory, resources, and policy can lead to inefficient and quite disastrous conflict outcomes. It's sort of important to understand exactly how expectations about who's going to fight on which side, and how much effort they're willing to put forth is going to influence the path of those outcomes, the kind of agreements you can reach, and how deadly the wars end up being once they're fought. Today, we have a model that talks about all of these things. I'm going to focus, because we have a limited amount of time, on the coalitions' effects on the activities during war, with some historical examples and data. And you'll see how the process works. So what is it that we do in this paper, and this project more broadly, is we're thinking about bringing models and data together. So we build a model of crisis bargaining with wars between coalitions. It makes a number of additions to theoretical literature on how we think about crisis bargaining and the onset of war in that context. In this presentation, I'm going to focus more on our empirical estimates from this model, though there are some interesting theoretical consequences which will show up in a sort of brief presentation of something that we show empirically later in the presentation. We're going to take that model, we're going to connect it with well-known data on international crises, the dataset on militarised interstate disputes, which I'll describe not in detail, but give you an overview as we talk about the link between the theory and the data. And then we're going to use the model to generate estimates of key theoretical quantities, right? And this is important, because it allows us to think about counterfactual worlds where strategic behaviour is to drive driving outcomes. I mean, if we understand sort of the fundamental parameters of the model, and what their quantitative values can be, then we can make predictions about things that we see, and also things that we don't see in that context. So to give you sort of a brief overview of the results that will come, and we're going to find that, sort of in the context of this theoretical approach, which is quite prominent among those people who study conflict, when you sort of take the model and ask it how it best fits the data, we're going to learn that when you're thinking about the things that affect effort in war, and in fact their outcomes, like who wins and loses, the demographic and economic factors are going to dominate political and geopolitical factors, sort of in determining those outcomes. There's an open question in our literature when we think about the net effect of...
Chris?
Yes?
Hi. Are you trying to move the slides? Because we cannot see them change.
They're not moving. Which slide are you on?
The first. Okay, now, now it works.
Okay. All right. So, yes, so telling you a little bit about the results that are coming. So we're at bullet point two now. The democracies' net effect is a force multiplier. You might imagine that the political consequences of fighting for democracy might produce costs that outweigh any benefit that you might get from that particular institutional design when it comes to actually the execution of conflict. And we find empirically that, you know, democratic regimes tend to get more bang for the buck when they participate in conflict. And then, sort of, an illustration of the kind of counterfactual assessment that you can make when you take this particular approach. We're going to do it, I'm going to show you a quick evaluation of the Schiefenplan from World War I, and how, and under what circumstances it would have actually been an effective military strategy early in that war. Okay, so this paper is related to a bunch of literatures. There exists a large literature on bargaining models and conflicts, so the theory of how we end up at war. There's also a large and well-known literature on coalitions and contributions to effort in those coalitions, both in general as a public good provision, but also in the specific context of contests. It's also related to literature on testing bargaining models, the quantification of uncertainty in strategic contexts, and model-based inference in international relations. Our model is very simple, but has a bunch, a couple of new elements, right? So we're going to be thinking about a crisis as characterised as a bargaining interaction between two teams, which we'll call side A and side B. Each side has at least one constituent, but in many cases has more, as is the case often in crisis interactions, that where at least one side will have multiple representatives who are making a decision about whether to settle or not, under what circumstances to escalate to conflict. So in this context, we think about... So in this context, we think about a simple framework that tracks the data that people who study conflict use, and that starts with an initiator who makes a demand of arrival or rival coalition. So in our model, our side A will make such a demand, it will map on to the initiators in our conflict data. Side B or team B or coalition B, however you want to think about it, that has to make a decision about whether they want to, to reach a diplomatic settlement to this crisis and accept the proposal that's made by A or team A or rejected that end up in conflict. And if they do end up in conflict, there's going to be costly effort, right? And they're going to play a strategic game with, which I'll describe in a second. But in addition to the, to the actual cost of executing a military strategy, there's also going to be political costs and potentially economic costs associated with just the decision to go into conflict. And that's going to be uncertain for our players. And they'll have beliefs about it and we'll make, we'll be able to estimate how different variables affect, affect those beliefs. So the other thing that's relatively new about our model is that often when people are studying crisis bargaining in these contexts, what happens in war is like a black box that's reduced to some kind of lottery over outcomes. Instead, what we're going to do is, effort is endogenous. So how you actually fight the war will depend on, you know, who's on your team, how much effort people on your team exercise, of the effectiveness of their military fighting, which we capture with in the model of the perimeter MI of military effectiveness and the cost of effort. Where at the end of the day, the probability that a side A wins is just the sum of their effectiveness weighted efforts of the individuals on your team over the total efforts inserted by your team and the other team. Probably the alternative, so that is team B wins is one minus that, once minus that amount. Among the members on side A, we have a pretty simple sharing rule, which is basically the, if it happens to be the case that your team wins, then you divide the benefits amongst the members of the coalition proportional to the effort they, they put into the contest in the first place. And that's going to provide us with a model that's going to give us a bunch of results about when you should see free riding and when you should see deterrence. And how those things will affect the bargaining strategies of players before the warfighting stage and how that in turn affects the probability that crises go to war. In this presentation, I'm going to focus on our estimates that is quantifying these different variables and assessing their importance with respect to the warfighting stage. The paper explores in both with respect to warfighting and war onset and bargaining. All right. So our game, you know, has a very, a pretty straightforward setup, it'd be Libya. On the warfighting stage, if people are going to choose equilibrium efforts that satisfy a national equilibrium condition in the red seeking contest. They're going to be under a lot of conditions. There's going to be strategic substitutes, which means free riding on teams, but also sometimes strategic substitutes across teams, which is like deterrence. So as my team increases efforts, it effect induces your team to decrease effort. And we also, you know, have, I think, quite clearly, which is common in these kinds of games. At least two people are, two participants are going to exert positive effort in equilibrium. And then in anticipation of this warfighting stage, the bargaining stage is going to have sort of standard risk reward kind of trade offs where, when the initiator is making proposals, he's trading off the marginal risk of a type choosing to go to war with the infomarginal return of all the types that would accept such an offer, actually giving them a larger slice of the pie. Also, you know, thinking about the equilibrium efforts in the second period. So what we're going to do with this model is we're going to think about structural estimation. So we're going to assume that the data is generated according to equilibrium behavior. We don't have to observe very much to make our model run. We just need to see whether there's war or not, which side won, team A or team B, and have some measures for these different factors of like military effectiveness, the cost of war. That we're going to have things that are associated with the mean prior beliefs that are associated with the political and economic costs of war onset, but not the actual military expenditures. And we can also estimate scale parameters for this belief. So we understand what kind of things make people can understand what kind of things make teams more or less uncertain about, about the likelihood that their opponent would go to war for a given offer. And we're able to do all of this within a maximum framework, well, technically a pseudo maximum or good framework, but basically the same. So we go to data, we look at the set of militarized interstate disputes that gives us about just over 2,000 observations. An important part of this model is including multiple players within these disputes. About a little over 10% of them have more than two disputants on at least one side. And when they do have more than two disputants, they have nearly five. So there's lots of, there's lots of wars where previous models that kind of focused on two-sided conflicts are kind of, would miss when they were brought to the data. About 10% of our observations again end up in war and wars have outcomes that either A or B win. We parameterize the model. I could, I don't have time to go into details of all the different ways we do it, but you can sort of think about there being two clusters of parameters or data that go into our model, those things that affect the prior beliefs of our players in the bargaining stage, which are things like, you know, how close are countries together? What's their long-term history of peace and conflict? Are big powers involved? Are there lots of democracies on each side? S scores are a measure of alliance portfolio similarity. So how many of these people are connected in the network with others through alliances and how many disputants are on each side? On the military effectiveness side, we think about democratic, demographic factors. The population, urban population, think about economic factors like GDP and exposure to trade. Let me think about political factors like domestic institutions and geopolitical ones like, where are you? Like, are you far away from other countries in this conflict? Do you have nuclear weapons? Do you have power projection capabilities? And those are the kinds of things that will influence how effective a dollar spent by your, by your country is on the team outcome. So we go through and we estimate this model with all these, with, with this actual real world data. They're basically asking the question. So if you were required to set the parameters of our model to the values that produce likelihoods for outcomes that most closely match what happens in the data, what do we learn about what those theoretical parameters should look like? And what we find sort of as a first order thing is that you might think that geopolitical or political factors would dominate the effectiveness of fighting in wars and war outcomes, but we find that instead the demographic, demographic and economic factors are, are the most important to determining the percent of variance explained in war outcomes among countries. And we could go even farther than this and start to think about, you know, one of the interesting things you could do with such a model is think about the counterfactuals. That is, what would happen if coalitions had been different, right? So what if, what is the essentially the causal effect of adding individual members to historical wars on the outcomes that happen? And we could do that because we have the theoretical model and we have the quantitative values for the effect of the parameters. So we can pull people in and out and then calculate equilibrium playing compared to what happens otherwise. So here's a simple example that I think relates some of the information that you can gather from our analysis. So we can look at historical war like World War One and think about the counterfactual efforts that players would make under different circumstances. And in this particular figure, you can see a series of countries, Belgium, France, Russia, Serbia, UK and US. And we could ask questions about how much effort would they exert in equilibrium as a function of who's actually in the conflict. And so what we see here in like this tan color is the baseline where the coalitions are as they actually were in 1914. And I think an interesting comparison would be, you know, people often ask, oh, what would happen if the US had actually entered the war in 1914 and not waited till, till later to come in like cavalry? And what you see is the effect on your own teammates. When you sort of look at the quantitative data is that you would have ended up with quite a bit of free riding in the sense that countries exert much less effort than they would have otherwise. That is compared to the tan bar, this dark, this dark red bar is the amount of effort they would exert if the US was present. And you could see free riding happening in the coalition, but you also see deterrence, right? So the rivals in the central powers, Austria, Germany and Turkey also exert less effort. So there's like interesting strategic consequences for, for entry in the context of the model that you couldn't get out without sort of thinking about the problem theoretically first and then asking what the quantitative implications of the model are. You can go even farther, right? You could calculate the ex ante expected winning probabilities that is putting these efforts into the model and calculating through what the probability of victory would be. And you see that, you know, the US entering maybe not surprisingly in 1914 would have had a large effect. But you can also do other things. Like you can think about the Schlieffen Plan, which was the idea that if the Germans could knock Belgium and France out of the war early, say in 1915, that would have had a major impact on their ability to win the war, assuming that the US stayed out. And we see that that is, and people have disagreed about whether that was actually the case. It turns out in the context of our model, when you think about equilibrium, the, the effect would have been taking the baseline sort of allied powers probability winning from basically two thirds to half. So decreasing it by, by 50% if they had been successful in implementing the plan. And that's something that you could do with the model. We do all sorts of other kinds of things. But it gives you a sense of, of what it is we can learn from the models when you quantify them. So I think we're getting close to time. So I don't leave time for questions. So in conclusion, you know, what is it that we do in our paper? We develop an integrated quantitative theory of crisis bargaining and fighting. Our model is designed to fit with empirical data, which is on wars. And in particular, the fact that many wars are based on coalitions and that the outcomes of wars are, are a strategic consequence of, of effort on teams as much as sort of the fundamental properties of the members of those teams. And so we, by doing that though, we were able to estimate the substantive importance of these substantively important theoretical quantities. We're able to show the demographic and economic factors dominate political and geopolitical factors and producing returns to effort and war. And we can quantify the extent to which free riding happens in coalitions and parse out individual contributions in complex multi-state conflicts. So, so I will stop.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chris. We have a couple of minutes for questions. Given current events, I can think of many questions that I would like to ask, but I will leave others if they wish.
So Chris, I had a, I had a question about, um, maybe it's an extension, but suppose that instead of, you know, the US is deciding of the US entering and it has these indirect effects on the behavior of the other European countries. I guess an alternative is it could just provide resources, I guess. So maybe it could provide something that goes into your MI. And I wasn't sure how I would think about the equivalence of spreading out resources rather than actively using them myself, if that's something you could, you could think about.
Yeah, I think what the way you would want to think about that in this problem would be, I could provide you, I could provide you effort, but you would have to put it through your production function, right? So, uh, right. So I could subsidize your EI at my cost, but it would go through your.
Right. You have to choose it. Yeah.
Yes, but you, but you'd have to implement it, right? So I send you the Javelin missiles, but like your army actually has to, to use them. And so the natural interpretation there, I think, is one in which like, it would be like E Ukraine plus E US times the Ukraine multiplier. And so, um, so the effect there, I guess, in some sense, if, so part of the problem with free riding comes from, uh, like my effort is essentially more effective than yours. And so as, as I am putting effort in, we're kind of changing the marginal calculation for you between marginal benefit and marginal cost of effort on the team. And so in this case, uh, if, I'm trying, I'm thinking that it might produce less free riding. That is like the, the rate of strategic substitution would be smaller. But it'd be, but we could calculate that for any.
Interesting. Yeah.
And see like whether are you, are you better off? If you could just like take effort and hand it to a coalition member.
Yeah.
The only thing is that in that circumstance, you don't get any pie at the end, right?
Right, right, right. There has to be some other value. Yeah.
But if you, but if you just valued like zero, one, whether you're, whether your team won and you don't really care about the distribution exposed, then that might be a more effective strategy.
Hey, so I will hold my question maybe for, for later, for a conversation with Chris later and during the day. Because now it's Carlos' time to start. Please, Carlo, the floor is yours.
Thanks a lot. Yeah. Also thanks for having me and it's a pleasure to basically join virtually here. Yeah, it's Francesco introduced me, but yeah, I'm also a recent Warwick graduate and now working at Bocconi. And today I'm going to talk about the impact of social media on elections. Then basically we're going to focus on the United States. As you can see, this is course at work with Thomas Fuji Baba, who does Princeton University and Carsten Müller, who's now in US, but who's also a graduate from Warwick, from the business school. And we jointly basically try to investigate really the impact of social media platforms. In particular, we're going to focus on the social media platform Twitter. And for this motivation of the paper actually given all the things that have been recently going on and also this COVID pandemic. We actually have to go all the way back to 2016 to November, where like, I think it is fair to say Donald Trump's election victory came as a surprise to many people, including myself. And in the immediate aftermath of his electoral victory, we see, we saw like a lot of news article and headlines talking about how Twitter and social media in general helped Donald Trump to pull off this upset election victory. Either by basically attracting and increasing his support or by smearing his opponent Hillary Clinton. And we also saw a lot of concerns about election interference by foreign powers, in particular Russian bots. But despite this big interest in this topic, there so far is little empirical evidence on the impact the social media platforms in aggregate can have on election outcomes. And this is gap, we are trying to fill this very paper. So of course, given that there are only 15 minutes, I will not be able to cover all of our results. But just to give you a brief outline and overview of what I'm going to talk about in the next 15 minutes. So we are going to exploit quasi-experimental variation in Twitter usage at the county level in the US to really get at the effect of Twitter. And in particular, we're going to explore the shock to the adoption of Twitter in the US based on the 2007 South by Southwest festival. And in my presentation later on, I'm going to provide more details why this festival matters for the adoption of Twitter. And using this instrument, we're then going to show that in contrast to the popular narrative, if anything, we find that exposure to Twitter decreases the Republican voter and thereby the voter of Donald Trump in the 2016, as well as in the 2020 presidential election. And here we have very consistent finding whether we look at county level vote outcomes or individual level survey data. Interestingly, we find no effect when it comes to earlier elections. And we also find no effect of House and Senate elections even in 2016 and 2020. So people decided to vote against Donald Trump, but did not vote against the Republican party in general in the same elections. Then we have several additional results where we show like the results are consistent with like independent voters being particularly persuaded by Twitter. And we of course also discuss the potential mechanism we are under, that are underlying our findings. But I will not have time to discuss these today, just to give you a preview of our findings. The most consistent with a general backlash against Donald Trump and Twitter in particular and not just the general leftward shift of Twitter or just a pure user number effect. But if you're interested in these, I can also talk about them in the Q and A or you can look at the paper which you find online. So let's get started then with the data and the identification strategy for this paper. Given the research question, it's unsurprising that we have voting data as well as a measure of Twitter usage per capita. Our voting data at the county level come from David Life, so the canonical source here. Our Twitter usage measure is based on a snapshot of nearly 500 million geolocated tweets that give us information. And around 17% of the US Twitter population in 2015, which we're going to use as a proxy for Twitter usage at the county level and this map visualizes this measure. And we could of course now just simply correlate these two measures. And I'm also going to show you the OLS correlation between them two. But of course, this would not be indicative of the actual causal effect of Twitter exposure. As there are many omitted verbes that could bias this estimate in either direction. And this is then where the South by Southwest festival. And this is then where the South by Southwest Festival comes in. So for those of you on familiar with this festival, the South by Southwest Festival is a music festival and tech conference that takes place in Austin, Texas. And we here for long time now, even until today. But what was special about the two thousand seven festival is that Twitter held a launch event there. Where they try to popularize the platform and also had a special feature where you could join Twitter by simply sending them SMS text. And this really took off at the time. So here is an article from The Guardian that talks about the crowd going bananas at South by Southwest. And there also quotes by Twitter founders that the test to the importance of this festival for the adoption of Twitter. In our paper, we of course also wanted to bring really like real world data to this question. And what we can show is that when we analyze the overall growth rate of Twitter activity in these time periods, which is shown in red in this graph, we really see like a clear shift in the month-to-month growth rate of Twitter activity wide at the time of the South by Southwest Festival. So the month-to-month growth rate of Twitter more than quadrupled with the onset of the festival. And what our identification strategy now exploits in the paper is the fact that not all counties in the US were equally exposed to this shock to the adoption of Twitter. And so on this slide, you see our main empirical strategy. And in the second stage, we're going to request our voting outcomes and other election-related verbes and our measure of Twitter usage. And the last factor of control verbes. But in the first stage, we're going then to instrument for Twitter usage at the county level. With the number of South by Southwest followers who joined in March two thousand seven. So this is a group of people who were likely induced by the festival to join Twitter. And therefore, the number of these people at the county level gives us a measure for how much county was exposed to this adoption shock. It's with any instrument, there then two main assumptions we need to defend. First, that we need to show that really this shock was locally concentrated and not just an overall increase in Twitter activity across the United States. And we also need that this shock persisted until today and was washed out by any other verbes. But probably more importantly, we need to defend the exclusion restriction since we are trading off the selection into Twitter usage. Now with the selection into the South by Southwest Festival. And there could be potential concerns that the number of South by Southwest attendings in the county affects vote outcomes through other channels. And this is also something we of course want to defend. And I'm going to say more about it in the following slides. But to start with, I want to show you some evidence for really the importance of this adoption shock at the county level. So what this events study is plotting is the number of Twitter users per capita. We observe in a county at different points in time. As a function, basically we're requesting it and now our measure of South by Southwest exposure. The first coefficients are very small and but the statistics are insignificant. But all these first coefficient at the quarter level after the South by Southwest Festival is statistically significant and positive. And we then see this edge-shaped technology adoption curve over time in line with our story that these initial followers really mattered until today at the local level for the adoption of the South by Southwest Festival. In the paper, we of course show far more evidence, but in the interest of time, I want to spend more time talking about the exclusion restriction of our instrument. And here, the concern everybody's mind is probably that there is some omitted verbe that could drive electoral outcomes in these home counties. So what we're going to do, basically in our strategy to address this concern is we're going to not only going to look at the home counties, also the South by Southwest followers who joined in March, which is our instrument. We're also going to look at the home counties of people who also follow South by Southwest, but only joined before the festival. So what sets this county apart is the fact that the top set of counties received an additional inflow of Twitter users as a result of the South by Southwest, while these other set of counties stayed at the level of Twitter usage the otherwise would have had. And therefore, basically the issue is show also they do not show any differential level of Twitter usage. But based on many, and basically the fact like vast, vast list of observed characteristics, these two sets of counties are very much identical. So here we show like balance checks based on also the control verbes we will include in our requests. And as you can see, nearly all of them are very much balanced and as soon as we apply correction for multiple hypothesis testing, all of these differences basically disappear. And what this basically give us similar to this county is the worsened omitted verbes that would drive election outcomes even in the absence of the South by Southwest Festival. We argue that such an omitted verbe should also affect this set of counties. And therefore, this set of counties give us in natural placebo check, as we since we will show that electoral outcomes are never different in this set of counties. We of course, a large set of additional robustness checks we show in the fence of our instrument. So just to give you an idea, in omitted verbes that basically you might have in mind would need to be correlated with our instrument in our outcome. But at the same time, would need to be uncorrelated with the numbers of South by Southwest followers joining before the festival. The large number of observable verbes I've already shown you. And I will also show you placebo test for other festivals, so that this is the vote also need to be uncorrelated with your attendance of any other festivals in the year two thousand seven. And given that the also do not see anything for levels and trends in election outcomes. We also would basically anything you have in mind would need to be uncorrelated with this previous election outcomes. And therefore, we argue that such omitted verbes is very implausible. And therefore, we can interpret our estimates as a causal impact of Twitter usage. So now, after I spent so much time talking about this instrument, it's finally time to solve this under science. So this graph shows this first date relationship, which is unsurprisingly strongly positive. And South by Southwest usage at the county level is a good predictor of Twitter usage even today. And this relationship is very stable, as you can see in this table. And independent of the controls that we are using. And also you see that the number of South by Southwest followers in the pre-period is never correlated with the level of Twitter usage after we take basic observer characteristics into account. When it comes to the second stage, I want to first show you again the reduced form of our instrument. Where we now look at the relationship between our instrument and the Republican voter. Where we see this clear and negative relation between our instrument and the Republican voter in line with what I told you about in the introduction. And here, just to show your preferred estimate, it suggests that doubling in the amount of Twitter users in the county is associated with the type of centred action in the Republican voter. Expressing persuasion rates is just persuasion rate about eight percent. So these are the results for the twenty sixteen election. And then we of course updated our analysis as soon as the twenty twenty election came around. And we found that also for this election, we see this negative effect, while there is never any significant impact for our placebo check in the pre-period. As also mentioned, we have this placebo checks for other festivals in two thousand seven. So here you can see that none of these festivals is either correlated with Twitter usage or the Republican voter in either of these elections. And then lastly, we were of course interested, is this now something that is particular and specific to the twenty sixteen and twenty twenty election? But as you can see in this graph, we find nothing for earlier elections. And in fact, in our paper, we analyze election outcomes also on levels. And in fact, our instrument is uncorrelated with any election outcome going back as far as nineteen twenty four. So it really seems to the best that there's something specific about the twenty sixteen and twenty twenty presidential election. And not only is there something specific about this presidential election. It is also very much, that is basically the finding, does not show up when we look at congressional elections, to House or Senate elections. So in this graph, we show you basically now the relationship for the congressional elections for the House. And the paper you can also find the results for the Senate. And as you can see here, if anything, our instrument is positively correlated with these outcomes, even so not statistically significant. Really show you that something was special and as we argue in the paper, the single was special about the twenty sixteen election is of course Donald Trump running and his devices rhetoric on Twitter. So to conclude on time, I hope I was able to convince you about the role of Twitter in these elections, which very much went into the opposite direction of what basically a popular narrative holds. And I hope of course that you are interested enough also then look up in the paper how we are trying to rule out and trying to show that it was the never Trump movement and moderate Republicans that were turned away from the Republican Party, particularly in these twenty sixteen and twenty twenty presidential elections. Thank you very much again for having me and I'm of course very happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you very much, Carlo, for your paper. I'm sure that this would, I mean, if we had more time, I'm sure that there would be many questions. Especially given your provocative results. We have three, four minutes, if anybody wants to kick in.
Can I can I just jump in very quickly? Hi, Carlo, that's a really interesting paper. I just got a couple of comments, question. First of all, you're you're talking about a result going against Trump. Did you find out what's the reason or was the channel, is it because of the effect on turnout or effect on switching preferences toward Clinton, for example? And second, about the instrument. You know, you're studying this shock. Is it possible that this shock has an effect on particular demographics, which have some correlation with some particular, you know, political preference? And therefore, there would be a shock in favor, let's say, of Democrats like partisan rather than, you know, a non-political shock?
I think all great questions and things we really try to look at. So when it regards to like, who is really persuaded here? And is it, so first we look at turnout obviously. And we find no effect on turnout for the twenty sixteen presidential election. While we find the turnout effect, which is significant in twenty twenty. But of course, twenty twenty presidential election is of course a very special election where there was more of mail-in voting, this workout turnout. So we are not, so at least our twenty sixteen, we said cannot be easily explained by turnout. What we have evidence for is in the switching of preferences. So we looked in survey data. And we checked like who of the people were exposed to Twitter. Now decided to switch their voting behavior and indeed the people who were most affected and who seemed to change their voting intentions the most were moderate Republicans. And this is really like a line what we would expect. And we also provide in the paper a lot of evidence on the overall levels land of Twitter content. With regards to our instrument and of course with any instrument, you will always identify local average treatment effect. Where we identify basically the effect based on the people who were induced by the South by Southwest Festival or like due to this exposure of the county to join Twitter. So we checked several things and the one one thing we can say is that the South by Southwest Festival did not lead to like a different population to be on Twitter overall in this county. So we had the profiles and compared them, these were very similar to other counties in the US. Of course, Twitter users are by no means representative of the US population. So of course, then we will always identify basically some late that might be not that meaningful. But we did extensive checks for heterogeneity. And we also tried to do some extrapolation of the treatment effect to other counties. So what would the treatment effect be if other counties based on the service would have been exposed to this South by Southwest shock? And what this exercise is also just is that if anything, the persuasion effects would have been even larger. Where if other counties would have been exposed, so our results potentially really suggest a lower bound of what basically we might expect as persuasion effect. Given that we are identifying, basically liberal counties who are already less likely to vote for Trump now be more exposed to anti-Trump messaging on Twitter, which probably might have been more effective in counties which would have been more moderate and more conservative in general. What is of course an important caveat, that is, which is also like discussing the paper is that social media will have different impacts on different people. What we are very much measuring is like the average effect of social media and like the exposure to county level. This does not rule out that like as we show in other papers, some people who are exposed to Trump's rhetoric might be more willing to commit hate crimes. This is not a contradiction, it's just the nature of social media and echo chambers, which exposes different groups of people to different types of content. But in this paper, we were just very much, and I think this also the relevant parameter, the overall impact on election outcomes. And not just like the impact for all of these diverse groups, so we are basically calculating some average here. And I think this is then, I think, what we are trying to convincingly show in the paper.
Thank you very much. Frances?
I'm muted, of course. Thank you very much, Carlo. Now it's Andreas who will conclude the session.
Start by saying thank you all for being here, for having us. Also, thanks to all of the other presenters, really enjoyed your talks. And let me get straight into it without further ado. So I'm very excited to talk to you all about voice and political engagement. This is joint work with Anzim Hager, Lukas Henzel and Chris Rock, who coincidentally actually is a former Warwick colleague, so there's another Warwick connection that I wanted to point out. And let me get straight into it. So it's often argued that the success of modern democracies really relies on the extent to which they have political parties which manage to represent members and voters' interests. At the same time, we have seen that major political parties have lost a large fraction of their members over recent years. Possibly fair to say decades. And this is often explained by sort of like a criticism that is directed at mainstream parties that they do not pay sufficient attention to their members and voters' views and interests. And so this kind of line of discussion echoes in a sense, arguments made by Hirschman in his theory of organizational decline, where he argued that when members of a given organization, so for instance, party members feel that the leadership of that organization, so of that political party is not interested in their view, they may actually become discouraged from further engaging in this relationship and ultimately may even exit that organization. And so against that backdrop, we're basically asking the following question in this paper. Thus, providing party supporters with an opportunity to express their concerns and share feedback with the party leadership, thus that what we call giving them voice actually increased their subsequent engagement in the party's electoral campaign. And to address that question, we conducted a field experiment with supporters of a major European party during a national election campaign. We randomly varied whether those supporters were given an opportunity to voice their opinions and provide feedback to the party leadership about certain policy topics. If they were given these opportunities, we considered them part of the treatment group. Of course, if they weren't given the opportunity to form our control group. Subsequently, we then measured real-world behavior of these supporters, in particular, whether they engaged in door-to-door canvassing that the party was organizing and this is registered on a smartphone application promoted by the party. We also measured their intentions to support the party in other dimensions via an online survey. In terms of contributions, again, in the interest of time, I'm going to be very brief here. But I just wanted to highlight that we believe our evidence shows that vertical relationships between the leadership of a political organization and its rank and file play a critical role. And in particular, the extent to which ordinary members of a political party have opportunities to communicate what their concerns and preferences are towards that leadership seems to have important implications for their motivation. At the same time, our findings also expand the literature on voice in organizations, which so far has primarily focused on firms. And then finally, our study contributes more broadly to the literature on social incentives and organizations. Let me now provide you with a quick overview of the context and a summary of the experimental design. Let me now provide you with a quick overview of the context and a summary of the experimental design. So our field experiment took place in the run-up to recent general election in a large Western European country, which shall remain unnamed. The experiment was implemented in collaboration with a major political party in this country. With the ambition to really study real world behavior, that is actual participation of these party supporters in canvassing, that is in a door-to-door campaign that the party was organizing. As well as sort of like their other margins in which they could support the electoral campaign. All activities, and when I say activities, what I really mean is all online surveys, as you'll see shortly, were conducted on behalf of the parties. So party supporters were not aware that they're being involved in an experiment. This is to avoid experimental demand effects. We recruited our samples from a list of email addresses that were basically collected by the parties. In particular, they had a list of party supporters that had signed up to receive campaign-related information from the party. So this was a list of about twelve thousand email addresses. This is not the same list as the list of party members, right? So the list of party members would be larger than that list by an order of magnitude. But these are the people who had actively opted in to receive campaign-related information. And in the first week of the official start of the party's electoral campaign, we then contacted these supporters again on behalf of the party. With an invitation to essentially take part in an online survey. In total, about a thousand people responded to our surveys and it's about an eight percent response rate. It's somewhat higher than what was achieved in previous studies in a similar context. And I guess just to briefly describe the sample without going into too many details, maybe unsurprisingly, our sample is a bit younger. And more active in terms of past campaign contributions than the average party member. Next, let me briefly summarize the experimental design. As I said, we conducted a natural field experiments, the supporters of the major European party, which we collaborated, did not know that they were part of this experiment. Then we randomly varied whether supporters received an opportunity to voice their opinion, that is to give feedback and make suggestions to the party leadership. If they were given this opportunity, again, they're part of the treatment group. If they weren't, they're part of the control group. And then we cross-randomized the way in which we introduced this opportunity to party supporters. And we cross-randomized this in two important ways. First of all, we varied the framing for the way in which this was introduced. And so that is the variation in the type of voice that was given to people. On the one hand side, we asked people about the, or basically we asked them to name policy areas that they cared about personally. So we considered this an intrinsic framing of this opportunity to provide feedback. And then in a separate cross-randomization, we also asked them about topics and policy areas that they deem important to improve the electoral campaign. So we attach a consequential or instrumental motive to this elicitation of their voice, because we wanted to see whether that ends up making a difference. The second cross-randomization is about the credibility of this opportunity to share opinions of the party leadership. And in order to render this slightly more credible, we randomized whether we announced that the respondents will receive feedback on the suggestions that they make. And it was announced that the feedback will be in the form of a summary of the results of the entire survey after it's been completed. After we introduced these treatment variations, we then proceed to measurement. And the first thing we measure are basically supporters' intentions in terms of how they want to support the campaign. This is measured in the context of the same online survey in which the treatments are being delivered. And then we proceed and measure real world behavior, that is the extent to which people engage in door-to-door canvassing. Which is tracked on a smartphone application promoted by the party. Let's see how I do in terms of time. I guess I'll briefly discuss some of those tree and design elements briefly. So I wanted to elaborate a bit more on how we elicit or provide, in a sense, the opportunity to provide feedback and so our voice treatment. The voice treatment again was administered in this online survey. And it consisted of two parts, which were administered in two separate survey pages. On the first survey page, the people in the treatment group saw, they were asked about the relative perceived importance of nine different policy areas. Which were directly taken from the campaign manifesto of the party. And so they were able to rank them in a multiple choice question. On a then following survey page, we provided respondents with an open text box in which they could add additional suggestions or concerns. And more than fifty percent of the respondents which were given this opportunity actually made use of it, which we interpret as a sign that there seems to be a latent demand for this type of voice. Let me briefly sort of like go a bit more into detail on the cross-randomization regarding the framing of that voice, again, and the instrumental framing. We explained to respondents that the party would like to learn about the topics and how they deemed, how they deemed the importance of these topics. And how relevant this would be to improve the effectiveness of the national election campaign. So again, consequential motive. While in the intrinsic framing, we're really asking about topics that are close to supporters' heart and to what extent they personally care about those topics. As I mentioned previously, we also have this second cross-randomization about credibility. Here we indicate that there will be feedback on sort of supporters' input, which we hoped essentially signaled that campaign organizers were taking the input very seriously. Next, in terms of measurement, again, we elicit intentions. We do this by providing a multiple choice question with a number of different activities that supporters could engage in. And then basically allowing supporters to tick off which of these activities they plan on engaging in. And our pre-specified measure of overall campaign effort here is the number of activities that people are intending to engage in. After we elicit intentions, we also, in order to learn a bit more about mechanisms, elicit beliefs about the extent to which people feel that their opinion is being heard by the party. And the extent to which they feel connected to the party. So we have four different questions that are listed on a five-point Likert scale, which we then combine into index. I'll talk a bit more about that outcome later. And then our final measurement is really sort of like real world behavior, where we measure actual canvassing behavior through the smartphone application. So in general, the party basically promoted the use of the smartphone application and asked party supporters that engaged in door-to-door canvassing to track where and when they knocked on doors to promote the campaign manifesto. This was basically introduced as an activity that would help the party to plan current and future campaign activities. I should say though, even under the best of circumstances, this is an outcome where only a small fraction of members actually take part in. So this is a high effort outcome and we don't observe. So like even in previous studies and previous times that a large share of members or supporters engage in this activity. In our context, we think that participation or low participation was further exacerbated by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Because of the pandemic, the use of this app was not promoted as strongly previously. And therefore, we observed very low participation. Let me now, after explaining sort of like what the experimental design looks like, have a brief look at the results of empirical specification. This basically a simple one where we just compare people who received any version of this voice treatment to those in the control group. And then we have a second specification where we separate out whether people received one version or the other of the framing and we have an analog specification for feedback. Just a quick note, our sample is balanced also across the cross-randomization, both in terms of individual level characteristics as well as in terms of prior campaign experience. So our main results are basically that people who received this opportunity to give feedback and make suggestions to the party are more likely to engage in both intended as well as actual campaign activities. So they're more likely, for instance, to participate in the door-to-door canvassing. But as I preempted, I should make it clear that overall engagement in the campaign was not very high. As evidenced by a control mean of basically zero in the canvassing outcome. When we separate this out by framing, so instrumental versus intrinsic, we see that the point estimates are slightly higher for the instrumental frame. But differences between treatment effects are not too significant. Similarly, when we look at difference of making this announcement, that feedback will be provided, we do not see consistent differences in people's engagement. And then just to wrap up, let me briefly talk about mechanisms. We think that one plausible underlying explanation could be a behavioral one where there is some psychological utility or rather disutility when party supporters feel disconnected from the party leadership. Which would then increase the marginal cost of engaging in campaign-related activities. So in a sense, a classic social incentive story at play and consistent with this underlying mechanism. We do find an increase in perceived voice in response to being exposed to this treatment condition. And at the same time, we do not find a shift in beliefs about the effectiveness of the campaign. So that brings me to a very short conclusion slide where I just wanted to highlight that our evidence suggests that parties may be able to increase their supporters' investment in the extent to which they engage in the democratic process. By implementing policies that increase their voice. And one of the things that we as a team, of course, is thinking about now is sort of like how such interventions can be scaled to allow the more general public to also benefit from such opportunities. And yeah, that's all I wanted to share for now. Happy to answer additional questions and so on and thank you again.
Thank you very much Andreas. We have a few minutes, so please go ahead. Then I will, just give me a couple of minutes at the end to conclude this. Anybody wants to do the first?
Maybe a more philosophical question or like based on my own research. Because if you think about like, ah, like having the opportunity to voice your opinion to party officials, like this is very much what should have gotten easier, like this new media technologies. Like somehow you should have the feeling you are more able to talk about basically what you think and get your opinions to the party leaders. But what we usually argue for is like somehow the social media and these new technologies have made things worse. So which goes slightly or like people have gotten less engaged or feel more disillusioned with the party. So do you see there's potentially any way that the intervention could backfire? Or the other way around, is there a way basically to restructure social media or like this communication devices in a way that when it comes to scaling it? That then it basically helps us to really bring back basically the border umbrella of these big parties in basically these Western democracies.
Right, yeah, great question. I don't, I'm not sure I'm going to have a completely satisfactory answer, but I guess we were concerned that an intervention like that could backfire in the sense that it's perceived as cheap talk. And you know, if there's no, no response to the feedback provided, then potentially this could lower motivation in the longer term. So for instance, when we had the feedback variation, we made sure that that was actually implemented. That was sort of like sent out to participants, sort of like a few days prior to the election to be truthful to what we told them. Again, we don't find sort of like that announcing this feedback seems to have any bite on their motivation. So in the context of our experiment, I'm not so sure about the role of credibility of this voice treatment played in terms of the larger implications. I guess that's a discussion that would possibly sort of like take a bit too long given the time left. But I agree that I think it's the, it's a main challenge to think about precisely sort of like how to make this conversation or this exchange of ideas meaningful and sort of like not one-sided. And so that's, that's I guess the struggle we're facing.
Can I just ask a very brief question? Oh, sorry Francesco, go ahead.
No, no, please go ahead Peter.
Yeah, just, just, I mean, because it's such an important topic, especially in the context, in European context, where sort of perceived valence of major parties has taken such a big hit. You know, regeneration from within seems extraordinarily important. I just had a very brief question about, on slide nine, I noticed that your primer for the sort of being efficacious activist, the one on top. Included a specific reference to constituency-based experience. And I wondered why you had opted to include that along with the primer about being effective and decisive in the campaign strategy? Is there, is there a reason why it's important that that should be channeled through constituency experience?
So we had a few discussions with sort of like representatives of the party on that. And they felt that in order to make this more credible, we should essentially try to source local information. So that was basically the justification for our inclusion.
Okay, excellent. Now, real quick, I was thinking about the role of intermediate entities such as the trade unions or, you know, associations and stuff. I mean, do you think that you can, your, that your work can say something about that? Because my sense is that that has played a major role in interfacing the party, both with its supporters and with the general public.
Yeah, our view, I think would be that our findings could be relevant for all types of organizations and sort of in to the extent that unions and, you know, similar types of organizations are also mostly sort of like based on a volunteering principle without strong monetary incentives. We do actually think that it kind of extends relatively naturally to these kind of contexts. And in our view, sort of like paying more attention to the relationship, this vertical relationship, as I pointed out, between leadership of these organizations and ordinary members could actually play a critical role in, you know. Basically kickstarting activity within these organizations again.
Yeah, okay, I, I think I have exactly a couple of minutes, so I would like to conclude. I mean, the first thing that I would like to say is that, I mean, I would like to really thank the speakers, because these are four very good talks. I mean, you really set a very high bar for anything that Quapic will do in the future. Now, it's been a great pleasure to see you again, guys, and to see you in action. We probably should have advertised this event using our usual channels, that is to say, to the Quapic members and so on and so forth. And I didn't do it because I just didn't think about it. And I'm sorry for that, but I hope that nevertheless, this has been an enjoyable experience. I mean, in some sense, I mean, being able to ask each other questions between the speakers is a, is a good format, because it creates, you know, a sense of community between the speakers. And it's something that I have seen also in the past. So again, I would like to thank you. I mean, it's really been a lot of fun to see you guys and especially and also to see your videos.
Yeah, thank you.